Study session for the city of Casa Grande. I think the first item on the agenda is a discussion regarding potential annexation of the northwest infill annexation. Planning and development department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So this evening, I'm actually going to make presentations to council on two potential annexations. And before I get into the details, just want to tell you that this briefing on annexation is not part of the statutory legal requirement for processing, but it's really more of our local policy to brief council on annexations before we start formally processing them, so you're aware, and you can give us any feedback that might be appropriate regarding them. So the first annexation I want to talk about this evening is 702 acres. It lies north of the Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway, and it's bounded on the east by Burris and on the west by Bianco. So it's just all raw ground. Some of it is in the floodplain, so there are some floodplain issues with this property. It is located within what we call our phase one growth area of the general plan, which means that infrastructure for development is fairly close or adjacent to the property, and it's kind of fairly ripe for development. This gives you just a little bit better overview of the outline of the property. And it is, consists of seven property owners who own 17 separate parcels. So some property owners own multiple parcels, but it is seven separate property owners. All of the property owners, or most of the property owners, except for one, have contacted us and indicated an interest in the property being annexed. So all of those have, property owners have come to us at some time in the relatively recent past and to express an interest in annexation, kind of some, pretty much independently, actually. Couple came together. But the one property owner that you see that's not shaded here, it's now in red, has not contacted us. But that property owner, who happens to be Scott and Scott Trailers, as you can see, they own 120 acres to the east that's in the city. So this is about 75 acres that they own that's not in the city. Most of their holdings are already in the city, so really don't expect that they would have any concerns, as most of their properties are already in the city. And as you'll see in a minute, the zoning upon annexation that we might give them would be the same zoning as their other property, their other zoning in the city. So, speaking of the general plan, the general plan puts most of this property in the manufacturing and industry land use category, except for the Scott and Scott property, which is in the residential land use category, excuse me, the neighborhoods land use category. We would expect that after initial zoning, that the property owners, many of the property owners, really some of the property owners in the manufacturing and industry category might seek I-1 or I-2 zoning. Again, that's sort of the growth area phasing. And so all of the property that's being discussed this evening is in the general rural zoning category in the county. And under state law, we would have to, initial annexation, grant an annexation of zoning that would not grant any additional development rights than the county zoning. So initial annexation upon annexation would all be urban ranch, which is equivalent to their general rural in the county. If, after this evening, and if we start the official processing of this annexation, you can see the steps, they would include the filing of a blank petition, and then within 30 days of that, we'd actually schedule a public hearing before city council, and we invite all the property owners, as well as adjacent property owners of that, to see if they wanted to come speak before council on that. And then after the public hearing process, we would then seek to obtain signatures on an annexation petition, and to see if at least 50 percent of the property owners, representing 50 percent of the real estate value, consented to the annexation. And if that was true, then we would bring an ordinance back before council with an infrastructure and services plan, how that property could be served for your formal consideration. So this is a briefing. You would have, if we continue, we'll have a public hearing, and then you'll actually have an ordinance considering the annexation at some point, probably, you know, four months from now or so. So that summarizes this annexation. Do you have any comments? Are we going to go into the next one? Would you like, Mayor?
I have a question. So you had that one map that showed our general plan outline, and the general plan showed that most of that's in industrial, in our industrial zone?
In the industrial category, yes, right here.
Yeah. So, explain to me again why we have to annex it in as urban ranch?
Got it. So the reason we have to do that is because it's a state law requirement. And the state law requirement goes something like this, and our city attorney can correct me if I get it wrong. But the state law says with cities annex property, the initial zoning that a city might grant an annex property cannot grant any additional development rights than the current county zoning.
Okay. So it's based on the county's current zoning of that land?
Yes.
Not necessarily our general plan?
No. But, but the property owner can follow it up immediately with requests to rezone in accordance with the general plan.
Okay.
Just initially, we have to give essentially an equivalent zoning to the county.
Okay.
That's a state law requirement.
State law, Craig, if that explains.
I got it, I got it. Bob?
You may have said this, but is there any current structures or housing or anything?
No, taken.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else, any other questions?
No, you asked the question again.
Okay. Do you want to do the next one then, or?
Sure.
No further questions?
Let's see. I think I need to have it loaded, though. Sorry, we should have just made this one continuous application. So this next one's pretty simple. It's the annexation of a little tiny, the last one was 702 acres, this is 3.74. So, a little bit different scope. And this is a request by the property owner, one property owner, to annex a small parcel that's adjacent to a larger holding. It's the chassis on this little 3.74 acre parcel, and it's adjacent to the current property, which is the Dreamport P A D. And they wish to annex it, and then probably eventually include it into the Dreamport P A D, or some subsequent P A D zoning that they might have for their property. So it's a little triangular piece, sits on the north boundary of northwest boundary of their site. And it is all in the commerce and business land use category. Again, we'll have to give it the equivalent zoning for the county upon the annexation, but it could be rezoned for anything that's allowed in commerce and business once it gets its initial zoning. So it is general rural in the county, so it will be given an urban ranch zoning initially. So that's the urban ranch. The property is, whoops, I backed up to that. The property is kind of a key property for the, for the chassis, because it lines with where Hennessy would come through. So it's really kind of an important piece, because it allows for the Hennessy, and it'll be on the west side of the future Hennessy extension. And again, this property, this annexation will follow the same processes the last one, although there's only going to be one property owner. It's going to be fairly simple. We know that the petition will be signed, because they've actually asked for it, and it'll immediately have a test. So this one will probably, will come forward fairly quickly. They are anxious to have it annexed and to include it in their larger P A D holdings.
So, I just have one question. How did we lose that one little slipper?
Before. We didn't lose it. They, why didn't we, why wasn't it annexed prior?
Yeah.
Probably wasn't under their ownership. They probably bought it kind of recently, and then wanted to add it. I don't think it was part of the original ownership. That's my recollection.
Okay.
I had kind of that same question. Did somebody sell that piece of their square, or their rectangular parcel? They sold what was south of the canal, it looks like?
I think that's what happened, yes.
Okay.
That's probably what happened.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions?
No, that was it.
Okay. Well, that's a wrap. It's a wrap for me.
Now the heavy lifting. Pardon the pun.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We're going to do a little trash truck tonight, so.
Trash.
Always a good time. This evening, we are going to talk about our sanitation collection, specifically about alleys, uncontained trash, and some other subjects. To help me through this, if I get tangled up in any of the technical information, I do have our new sanitation superintendent, Ron Rouse, is here this evening, as well as Greg Garcia. Obviously, Greg has probably no historical knowledge about sanitation in an apartment, so can't do this job without them. All right. So this evening, we're going to discuss these five topics. Alley bulk or uncontained collection, illegal or wildcat dumping, narrow and unsafe alleys, refuse carts, and abandoned shopping carts. Always a fun topic. So as we go through this presentation, if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me. We've got a lot of slides to go through tonight. We are not going to talk about every single slide. There's a lot of photos in here, just to provide council, as well as the public, just a good gauge for what we have to deal with in our alleys when we're talking about uncontained or bulk alley trash pickup. This is our pie chart for the sanitation division, and on the bottom right side there, in the red, is our bulk uncontained portion of the budget. $767,000 is what we currently spend, based on how we account for those different cost centers in sanitation today. So uncontained trash is basically waste that cannot be reasonably placed in your trash container. Now, I want you to think about that and keep that in the back of your mind as we look through some of these photos. You're going to see, as we see every day, there's a lot of things that are thrown out and considered uncontained trash, and that's how we have to deal with it. However, they could fit in trash cans. So what I do with my bulk debris is, I cut it into small enough pieces so that I can get it into my 96 gallon cart. Some people don't take it to that level. And this is also not an opportunity for us to pick on any one area of the city, especially not people who live in areas that are serviced by alleys. This is just an opportunity for us to really educate council and the community what we're having to deal with, and then towards the end, we'll talk about what are the opportunities that we're able to come up with. And understanding that alleys is one of the focus areas for city council, as far as us trying to manage blight throughout the community. And we had talked about doing an alley cleanup, but thought it would be better to do this educational step before we move on to doing some education with our residents. Currently require, or we ask people to place uncontained trash in their alley behind their property, not up against one of our containers, and hopefully not burying one of the many utilities that are typically sharing the alleyway, as it is a easement that is property owned by each property owner, and each side of the alley owns to the middle, and then it's an easement for those utilities. And that's what we access to manage those 300 gallon containers. We ask people to limit the size to 10 cubic yards, and you'll see in the pictures, that's not often the case, and that's roughly six feet by six feet by seven and a half feet. A very overloaded pickup truck bed is what that 10 cubic yard represents. And then we don't, we don't want them to include any tires, glass, shower doors, fluorescent lights, heavy construction materials. And we also don't want any hazardous materials, and of course, freon in a refrigerator would be considered hazardous. So we want them to be tagged so that they're certified that the freon has been removed before we go out and pick those up. And if we do come across them, and they have not been discharged, then we do have a fee that we charge them, and then we have a company that comes out and takes the freon and removes it, so. So just a few facts. We have 15,500 residential customers. 98 percent, excuse me, 68 percent are curbside, 32 percent are serviced by alleys. We roughly spend $7,500 hours annually on uncontained trash, so those are man-hours, people off boots on the ground, either running equipment or loading things up by hand. 1,838 total tons of debris is removed as our uncontained effort. 90 percent of the total uncontained trash is generated from the alleys and areas surrounding the alleys. So that only leaves 10 percent of the rest of the city that adds to our uncontained effort. And of our fee, our current monthly fee is $21.15. If you pulled uncontained out, it would represent about $3.42. And again, that's how we are currently accounting for that cost center. That could change if we went in and redid the accounting and looked at that in a little more detail. And then the city landfill, we currently have residents that bring uncontained trash out to the landfill at no charge. It's 2,575 tons. And just to put a magnitude to that, if we were to charge them our regular landfill fee, which we don't, it's roughly $100,000 that would be generated if we did charge for that, but we currently don't. So uncontained is separated into six zones throughout the city, and each week, we tackle one of those zones. The zones are fairly even, but zones three and four are probably, no, two and three. Which ones are our heaviest?
Three and four.
Yeah, three and four are our heaviest zones. Those are the ones that, that give us the biggest challenge trying to get through those in that week's period. We do a pretty good job of managing each of these zones, don't typically have issues. We did, however, earlier this year, we were, we were behind for about a four-month period, where we had some zones that we were four weeks behind on, and we just had to play catch-up. So we have caught up, and we've been able to keep up with those for the past two to three months, so really haven't had too many issues. So now, we're going to get into some of the photos, and I'll describe a few of these, but as I talk, Ron's probably going to be flipping through those pretty quickly. If there's anything you want me to stop on again, just please ask. This is an alley actually, south of the railroad tracks, just off of Florence Street, just south and east of our Life On Main area. So this is an alley that we had just cleaned up, and actually, this is one of the alleys where people take a lot of pride in the backsides of their properties, and they do a pretty good effort of maintaining those. And then the next one is just an example of an alley in the Evergreen area. Again, an area that we're really not challenged with, except with respect to some of the size of the uncontained trash piles that we deal with. So now, we're going to get into some of these trash piles, and these are not unusual. This is what we have to tackle all the time. Unfortunately, you, you go out and if you read social media, you'll hear people complaining how they've been calling about the same pile of trash for three or four weeks, and we've done nothing about it. And actually, in some of those cases, we've been out there three or four times picking up piles, and the pile has regenerated overnight, or within, you know, the next few days. So I wish these were the exceptions, but unfortunately, it's not. We've provided this service in the city for quite a while. When you take a look at this picture, we're going to be coming back to this in just a second, because it looks like we're looking down an alley, and there's a house in the middle of that alley. Not really. So this is one item we came across. This is a structure that someone tore out of their backyard, and actually drug it out with a pickup truck into the middle of the alley, and then left it for us to pick up. Now, good news is, code enforcement was able to come out and handle that, and the resident did have to deal with this particular structure. But it's not unusual for us to see things like this. And in the past, and up until this point, we've managed and picked these types of things up. But this is, that one is really an anomaly. But I just, I love that picture. That one's going with me when I leave here. Again, here's a pile of trash. All of that trash that you're looking at could, could be placed very simply into a 300 gallon container. Zip through some of these things.
The rest of that alley didn't look too bad. It was just that one place. It was really that house.
Yeah, you know, sometimes it's difficult. So this is actually one that, a pile of trash that we actually had a call from Councilman Herman. He called up, and somebody had complained to him that we had not cleaned this pile up, and we actually went out there and cleaned it up. And I gotta, I gotta find where that one is.
Thank you, Kevin.
There we go. Okay. We'll come back to that one, actually. I don't have my notes with me right here.
Do you have some of Councilman Herman's name on the trash there?
No, there wasn't.
Envelopes or anything?
He was just basically communicating what one of our residents had communicated to him, and he's very good about getting that information to us. As all of you guys are about getting information to us so we can respond. This is our crew actually working in the alley. That's our small Kubota, a very small loader. It's got a grappling bucket, so that's a bucket with a basically a big metal hand that they can help pick that trash up. Obviously, there's a lot of handwork that has to be done. If they were to just run into that pile with that loader and push up against the fence, the fence would obviously fall over the brick wall or whatever's behind that. Typically, what they do is they push as close as they can, and then they handload everything into the bucket. So it's not, not easy work by any stretch of the imagination. And then we use our rear loads, the same ones we used to use for our recycling program. We're able to dump right into there, and then, of course, compact and keep those trucks out on the street longer, as we're able to compact that debris and not have to run to the landfill. Pretty efficient operation, but backbreaking, to say the least. So, let's go to this one with the tires. So here's a section. This alley was actually cleaned up three days prior to this picture being taken. Now, there's barely enough room for a vehicle to get around that trash pile. I would say 80 percent of the trash, and this is just my numbers, 80 percent of the trash that ends up in the alleys, we cannot tell you where it came from.
I'm sure.
We can't actually say, yes, it's this homeowner, or it's that homeowner. Sometimes we can, if we look at the debris, and we look at the types of trees, or a project that's going on, we're able to figure that out. But this one was obviously dumped there, most likely not by any of the property owners in that area. So this is just a snip from the state's website about what is illegal dumping, the A R S statute that goes with that. And then it talks about how illegal dumping impacts communities. Obviously, the time and effort that it takes for our crews to go out there and manage these alleys takes away from our ability to do other, other projects or work on other areas. This is our municipal code. This is actually a sign that we had in front of our alleys in our test area. We'll be showing you some pictures of some areas of alleys that we've actually gotten out of servicing, the larger containers, and we've moved to curbside containers. But these are the no dumping in alley signs that we had placed out there. And again, code enforcement, we actually removed these signs. Code enforcement was unable to really help us trying to figure out who was dumping in these areas, so the signs really did us no good.
Next, you want to put a gate either into the alley and just give the fire, or the garbage truck a key to it to get in there?
Yeah, but then every utility would need a key to get in there.
Utilities, too, yeah.
It becomes problematic. So this next one is actually a picture of Western Manor. This is the one that, that Councilman Herman had forwarded the information from a resident who had called in complaining about this particular spot. This is actually that site on 916. So this next picture is that site on 921. We had already cleaned it up. This is what was there on the 21st. This is what it looked like after we had cleaned it up for the second time, and then two days later, this was out there. Now, this is an area that we had worked with our police department. Police department, they do use what I'll call a game camera. It's a small camera that you're able to hide in a high area where people can't mess with it, but it's able to take pictures whenever there's motion in that area, to try and capture whatever activity's going on. In this particular area, we mounted one of the game cams on one of those telephone poles in the background, and through that one camera, I think within three or four weeks, we were able to do three citations. So three individuals.
One weekend.
So it was one weekend, excuse me. So in one weekend, we were able to issue three citations. I think we were fortunate, and I don't know that we'll have that kind of success with every placement of a camera, but it's one of the things that we're going to continue to work with P D, look at maybe some additional resources moving into this next budget process, and really try to work on, number one, educating the community, and number two, trying to find ways to move forward with a little more aggressive enforcement.
The one you were talking about, it looks like somebody did, it's coming from somewhere else with that trash, doesn't it? Dumping there, you clean it up, and they come back and dump again?
Yeah, like I said, I'm guessing that we could probably determine 80 percent of the trash that's uncontained, where it comes from. The rest, we have no idea.
Yep. That one's right along Burris Road, so pretty high-traveled road, and they're worried about backing up the canals as well. Kevin, I don't know if we could go down this road, but would it be a good idea at some of these places to put like a big roll-off container, so at least if people are going to dump, maybe they'll put it in the container? Then we could service it on our six-week schedule?
Where are they going to sleep, man?
If you invite them, they will come.
That's what I figured, you guys would probably. But I know you've had events, like, we had one on the south side, right, where you guys brought a container out one day and invited everyone to?
In late 2006, I did a cleanup day, and we actually targeted the Colonial del Sol area. It's a little county enclave there, but we get a lot of complaints about the desert around there. So I brought in two or three dumpsters. I had, I think, one operator working with me. We worked all day trying to manage that. We filled up seven or eight dumpsters full of trash, and we had to hand-go through everything because unfortunately, if you don't monitor absolutely everything that's thrown in there, they're throwing anything and everything in there. We need to go through it to make sure that we aren't dealing with hazardous materials and things like that.
Now, we do the trash in that area, don't we?
No, we don't.
Oh, we do not?
We do not. And actually, we're required to provide sanitation services, either through the city services or through a contractor for our. or through a contractor for all of our residents. That requirement is not the same for unincorporated county areas.
Okay.
There is no requirement. And that's part of maybe some of the issues that we deal with. When you've got folks that aren't required to have sanitation services, they're gonna get rid of their trash one way or the other. And driving down an alley and chucking it out the back of the truck obviously is a pretty convenient way to do it, unfortunately.
Now, does Colonial del Sol pickup to the county area?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
See if I can catch up on my pictures here. And again, you're looking at quite a few of these piles. Had they just made an effort to throw it into one of our containers, we could've managed it a lot better. Or maybe pace how often they bring the things out. And this is also a time in our community where there's a lot of activity with new growth. So you've got a lot of people maybe purchasing homes, trying to do fix-ups, and they're tearing a lot of stuff out of those homes. So that might be adding to the amount of debris that we're seeing. This is some of that construction debris. Clearly, this did not come out of somebody's backyard. I would be afraid to see the guy that could tote a piece of concrete that size. Clearly, this is something that was dumped there, coming from the outside somewhere. So now, we have pulled out of some of the alley areas throughout town in the past. Most of the time, it's because utilities do work in those alleys. And when they redo their utilities, because of where they place their utilities, and they have the right to, but because of where they place their utilities, we're no longer able to drive a truck down that thing. Normal vehicle, no problem, but you'll see some pictures of our trash trucks here in a minute, just to kinda give you an idea. I'll go back to that one real quick. This was actually in the Rancho Grande area. This was not a ground utility issue. These were overhead utilities. Because of the age of the infrastructure there, the lines above had started to sag to a point where we were no longer able to service our containers because they were hitting the wires. And that's one of the things you'll see with the pictures that are coming up, that we don't have a lot of room to maneuver in these areas.
And what have you done as an alternative? Are they front rollouts?
Yes, we moved all these to front rollouts. And we continue to encourage them to call in bulk item pickups. However, we're still working in the alleys in this area for some bulk item pickups. But it's just one area that we had to pull out of because of utility issues. Here are a couple other areas. Panal is the north-south street running through the middle, and you can see the grade school and middle school there to the right of Panal. And part of it's just west of Panal, north of McMurray and south of McMurray. And then if you look over to the east, there's a road there that, an alley there that we pulled out of as well. And then the next picture is actually the test area. In 2006, the city went through a test area where we got ourselves out of servicing containers in the alleys. And we provided 96 gallon containers to all of these folks. And when I first came on in late 2006, we were just wrapping up this test area. We left all of them at curbside. There were a lot of issues, both pro and against either getting back into the alleys or staying out of the alleys. It's difficult when you've got these areas where they were developed to be serviced by alleys. And some of the way the fronts of these homes have been developed, there's really no convenient way to move a cart in and out of that yard without just having to leave the container in the front yard. And of course, that's not something we want either. So I know we probably took some pretty good kicking back then, but in all accounts, we think it was a successful project. So we stand by our decision. So here is one of our trash container or side-load trucks. As you can see, there's utilities off on the left side of that vehicle. The guide wires for the telephone poles, you can see a gas meter. And I think just past that is a small tree, and then I think you've got a phone pedestal there. And then on the right side is the wall, and you can see how much room is on either side of that truck. Now, here is the truck maneuvering around the telephone pole that you can see on the left side of the vehicle, driver's left side. And then, you know, the few inches it has to clear that wall in the background. And then this next picture is even better. I mean, here's where the vehicle is placed. You can see how close his tires are to that container, and you can look at the proximity of that fence. We do hit fences. I'm not gonna lie to you. We have a lot of fence damage issues. However, there's really no way to avoid that in some cases. But our drivers are very skilled. You can see the arm that wraps around that container. It had to have come within a few inches of that fence without hitting it. And then they lift that container up and then set it back down without hitting the fence.
And the gas meter.
So the entire time, you also need to take a step back and look at what's overhead. So we've placed each of those containers strategically because there's only so many places that you can lift that into the air and not come in contact with those overhead lines. So that's a challenge. Some people, you know, request, hey, can you throw three or four more containers in this alley? You know, we don't have enough. And you really can't because those are the locations that we're able to service those. And then people move containers as well. Sometimes they'll move it so it's more convenient for them. Driver may not notice, picks it up, and all of a sudden, he's got lines hanging onto his lift arm, which is a challenge. And those are just claims that we have to deal with through our risk management. So here are two side-load containers. The one on the left is our 300 gallon container. That's typically what you will see in alleys. And then our 95 gallon cart on the right side, which is what we use for most of our curbside services. And then this next picture is a section of our commercial areas in town. We do not provide bulk recovery of materials, uncontained trash, for commercial entities. It's not part of the fee that they pay. This just happens to be behind, I can't remember exactly where it is. Against abuse. And, you know, we'll find things like this all the time where somebody may be driving to try and donate this furniture somewhere. Nobody's open. Well, they're not taking that furniture back home and it just ends up in the alley. We do end up having to respond to these types of things. We try not to. We try to hold the businesses accountable. But at the end of the day, we're gonna remove it if that's, you know, where we end up.
Kevin, it looked like there were six trashcans lined up there.
There are quite a few in that area. But, you know...
Does it all go with that one client?
No, there's probably three or four businesses. You know, it's a strip-type mall in front, so each of those businesses probably have their container that they pay for. And this is just a photo of what we run into, you know, debris not making it into the container. You know, we'd love for everybody to bag and tie their trash. Then if a trash bag actually fell on the ground, it'd be a little more manageable. But this is typically what we find. So when we do clean up those alleys, it's usually rake, shovel, and those types of things that we go through. This is another issue that's been, well, it's not been brought to our attention of late, but we have situations like this around town where you've got a subdivision and you've got an alley on the back of those homes and it affronts a street. A perfect example is Casa Grande Avenue as you drive north from the city hall complex here. All along the left side of the road is those homes' alleys. And then you've got people's front yards right in front of them. One of the things that we're gonna be looking at and recommending, again, through our education process, is converting these to 90 gallon containers. I don't believe it's fair for the other residents who affront this to have to look at that. It doesn't make a lot of sense. But it's just part of our history, and as we grow, we just need to figure out how to change. So we'll be working through the budget process to address this. I may have skipped over a slide. Did we already go over the container?
It's come up.
It went right there.
About 246,000.
So if we were, just to throw this out, if we were to take all of the alleys and start servicing those as front-load 96 gallon containers, just to provide each of the residents their own container, it's about a quarter of a million dollars. So $250,000 just for the initial outlay to purchase those containers so that we can start serving, servicing those curbside. Just food for thought. So the other thing that we've been working with, both code enforcement and our police department, specifically the volunteers, code enforcement has made an effort to really go attack blind. And I think they've done a pretty good job, and now they've got an extra code enforcement officer, so hopefully they can even up their game a little more. One of the steps we have moved forward with is starting to collect some of these shopping carts. And they are all over our community, and I'm sure you all are aware of that. We currently, code enforcement will identify where these carts are, and then that information gets to the police volunteers. They go out and pick those up in the pickup trucks and then take those out to the landfill. The landfill then, and this is a great picture, in this alley alone, the graphics aren't the best here, there's 13 containers, shopping carts, in this one alley. It's hard to see, but if you count...
Are there squatters there too, or...
You know, people walk to the grocery store, they bring their cart back, and then they leave it. They don't take it back, so... And then the homeless probably take advantage of that cart because then it just becomes their moving home, so... But here's a good example of just a bunch of carts that were just left. So the next picture here is actually of our landfill. And these are the carts that are being collected. We notify the owners, and they have 30 days to come out and retrieve those. If after 30 days, the owners have not retrieved them, then we will landfill them. And actually, a lot of these are metal, so we'll probably give them to our metal scrap hauler and try and generate some cash. So we've got a lot of opportunities. We really had no preconceived idea of what direction we were going to go, but we are gonna do two things. We are going to work at educating our community on several different fronts, newspapers, social media, website, direct mailings to areas. We really want them to understand what our expectations are when it comes to managing their trash that go into 300 gallon containers and the importance of that, as well as the uncontained trash, and when it's appropriate and where to place it so that we can better manage that. We're gonna start really pushing the amount of uncontained trash. And again, I go back to if it's an unmanageable pile, we may not know where it comes from and we're gonna own having to remove that anyways. But we're gonna start working on that. Some of the things that we've considered, just bantering back and forth as staff, is maybe we develop special fee areas. When you look at the cost associated with areas that are serviced in alleys, it's costing us a lot more per home to service those versus areas that are serviced curbside. So it's just, it's not something I'm advocating for. It's just, I kinda throw that out.
Wouldn't be a good idea.
Should we charge for the services that we're providing? So it's one of those things that when we get comments from people, that's the first thing they say we should do. It's not something that we're advocating for. I just wanna throw that out there because it's just something to think about.
People, a lot of them, what wasn't shown is some of the good alleys that didn't have trash. It'd have been kept up good, and people have put out, kept them in good order. And why should they be charged more than somebody else because they don't have a home that has a way to have a front yard storage for a trash? I mean, that's just probably not a good idea in my mind.
Yeah. Well, and, you know, people who aren't familiar with alleys come up with great ideas that it don't always work, so... But I did wanna communicate that because there, you know, are a handful of people out there that, you know, if all your issues are in the alleys, why are we paying the same amount as somebody in the alley? It's one of those struggles we deal with all the time. But we do want to educate our residents on how they can utilize the landfill and maybe take some of the onus off of our crews out there. They're currently able to use it at no charge. That's one of the things that we're gonna consider. We've looked at how a lot of communities have kinda reshaped the level of service that they provide, and it's one of the things that we're gonna do through this upcoming budget process. So we'll communicate with council what directions we might think of going and explain the budget impacts, either positive or negative, and maybe vet some of these issues out. We're gonna continue to work with PD and code enforcement when we're able to and try and get more people cited. I think if people were fearful that they were gonna get a hefty citation for illegal dumping, they may think twice. We may also be pushing this issue to the outer areas of town or maybe other places in the desert. It's a fine line that we walk when we're trying to manage uncontained trash. And then, you know, most people aren't willing to throw their neighbor under the bus and say that's their trash. They play dumb, and I get that. I wouldn't wanna pick on my neighbor and I wouldn't want them to pick on me. But I think if we can generate some pride in the alleys, like Councilman Powell, you mentioned some of the cleaner areas that do manage their alleys better than others. The Evergreen is a great example, as well as some areas on the south side of the tracks. I will tell you, a block away from there, it's not the same. So it really depends on where you're at and what pride they take. And you may have one house that keeps it immaculate and the next house that doesn't. And it's just how do we educate and how do we get people to maybe start moving in the right direction? And then we're gonna continue to install the surveillance cameras when we're able to, to see if we can't get some more citations issued.
Great idea.
Get some people cited for illegal dumping. And once we get a little better control, then we can really target those hot areas and maybe scare people off. We'll see.
Kevin, I've, just a question in my mind. If you go down through a well-kept alley, you pick up both sides, because they pick up from the same side when they go down an alley, don't they?
Yes.
So when you're picking those up, you make one trip down an alley and you pick up the whole block. But if you're picking them up in the front, you have to go all the way around the block and down both sides of it. It seems like if the alleys were in good shape, it wouldn't be any more expensive to go through the alley than it would, maybe less than going around.
It really comes down to time and the amount of time it takes to maneuver through those alleys safely. We are not motoring down the road like we do with the side carts on a curbside, where we're just driving, stopping, picking up, driving, stopping, picking up. In the alleys, it's a much more slow, methodical process. The driver is looking at both sides of the mirrors. He's looking at where his tires are off-tracking as he's driving around things and then stopping at that very perfect spot and just extending that arm just far enough to grab that container and dumping. The Evergreen is a perfect example of an area where the alleys are much wider than other areas, and it's much easier to maintain versus some of the other areas that were developed with...
I saw some of them in Rancho Grande that you showed me.
When you've got an eight-foot truck and a 12-foot alley with five feet of garbage on each side, it doesn't leave a lot of room in the middle. So, I mean, you really do have to maneuver. And if you ever wanna take a trip and sit with one of the drivers, I encourage it. It's amazing what they're able to do with those big trucks and not do more damage than we do.
My dogs love them. They love to bark at them when they get in the alley there.
So I just wanted to kinda go back to that slide. This is where a lot of the stats were, but with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, understanding that we've not come up with a definite plan yet, but we're gonna start rolling out some education pieces. Been working with our Facebook folks. We're gonna try and get some information out there. We're gonna work with the newspaper, hopefully get some articles to really put a positive spin on this, and just see if we can't get our residents to make a little better effort so that we can continue to provide the services that we always have, but make them more reasonable for us to manage.
Kevin, I want to say too that I was at the animal control about three weeks ago, and they told me that the alleys also are collection points for people dumping live animals. I mean, the alleys are used to dump strays and get rid of unwanted dogs and cats. So it also doesn't just collect trash, it's collecting live animals as well. So the alleyways are, they attract... So it, the alleyways are, they attract lots of unwanted material, is all I can say.
I'm not going to argue that point.
Well, first of all, thank, I was just like amazed through, through the presentation and I, I really commend everything that you guys do. I live in a neighborhood that has an alley, so I'm, you know, faced with a lot of this myself. And, and I, I noticed kind of what you talked about where the trash comes from because we will bag and tie our trash, but when I come outside in the alley, there's, someone has gone through the trash. I, you know, you have the alley surfers or whatever they are, and there's stuff all over the place. There's garbage from other homes, there's, and it's on my side of the yard because that's where the trash can is. So I notice everyone is bringing their lawn, you know, brushes or dumping and everything to my side. So it looks like it's all my trash, but it's not all my trash. So, um.
Dumpster divers.
Yeah, dumpster divers, yeah. Because we have a landscaper that takes our trash away, but there is a lot. But I do think the education piece has helped me. I mean, you know, I know and I mentioned it the last couple of meetings ago, that I received a notice in the mail that said our alley, you know, has a lot of weeds and trees. And, and I, I guess I never noticed it before, that that was my responsibility. So I think the education is critical, but I know it's not going to eliminate probably ninety percent of this, so. But, but there are people like me that, that just don't know. And as far as the, the, the large, you know, the six week, you go every six weeks for the uncontained trash. It may, and I, I think, you know, I know people won't go on the website and find out when their date is. But maybe if we, we promote that a little bit, you know, you know, just do, spend a little more time promoting that and find different methods of promoting when it's going to be in their area and what they can put in the trash. So, but, so I do think that, that education and everything is, is very important. But I, I like where you are with all these other pieces. I mean, enforcement, we need to do something because people are coming into the alleys and I know firsthand that people are coming into the alleys. And so, you know, I think we do need to do something with enforcement. I actually like the idea of, you know, cameras and having watch groups and then, you know, neighborhood, you know, neighborhoods have watch groups. Why can't they watch the alleys, you know, what's going on and report that? I, I do like the idea of going to curb side. I mean, I would really like more information and I, I know, I know it's costly, but in the end, but, but can it, can we really avoid some of this illegal dumping? Do you really feel that if those big trash cans aren't in the alleys, it will avoid? I mean, maybe not a hundred percent, but what percentage do you think will go away by not having those big dumpsters in the alleys?
I can tell you this, in the test area, we still have to deal with uncontained trash. But it's at a fraction of what we have to deal with in other areas. So, and I, I don't know that, you know, I did not see the, and maybe Greg, you can speak to this, but I didn't see the condition of those alleys before they did the test. And I couldn't tell you if it's, you know, what it relates to, what area it might mimic. So I think it was a typical alley.
Yeah, it, those alleys, I mean, they were notorious for people because they were kind of, we call them snake alleys because went this way and then went, went that way and people could just go in there and, and dump and then take off and. But right now, like Kevin said, it's just a fraction of the uncontained trash that we're getting now that we used to get. So when we remove those containers, I mean, the uncontained went way down. I mean, there, there's still spots that we put cameras at a few places, but other than that, it's, it's way down.
And I know Dick talked about the, you know, the, coming on the, or going down the street versus the alley. Well, my neighborhood, I'm in a cul-de-sac and I'm the only person that has alley pickup in my cul-de-sac. So they're coming by and picking up every other house. They skip mine because I have alley and then go on the other side and pick up all on the curb side. So I'm the only, they're there anyways. I'm the only one that, but of course, they're probably picking up, you know, on the other side of the street. Paseo de Paula is on my side, I'm a Laurel. But, so they're coming anyways. So, you know, I, I mean, I personally would prefer curb side pickup. But, but, you know, I, I was just curious if it would really eliminate some of that illegal dumping, so. But no, I, I really appreciate everything you guys do. I watch them come and I watch them get out of their trucks and, you know, clean up all of that stuff. And, I mean, it's just, yeah, it just amazes me what, what they do, so.
Um, just a, just a couple of things. First of all, thank you, Kevin. I was looking at the pictures this weekend and kind of took some drive through some of the alleyways. And, and when we first moved here, we had an alley and we loved it until we had to clean up other people's stuff. And that happens, it happens a lot. But we did because we were responsible. You had mentioned that at one time you guys were three or four months behind. What, I'm just, was it because of manpower or equipment or just?
So when, when recycling was questionable, whether we were going to continue moving forward or not, we had vacancies that occurred. And instead of hiring maintenance workers that we may end up having to terminate if we eliminate recycling from the program, we use temp workers. And we don't get the same effort from a temp worker than that we do a regular employee. So there's also extra management and supervision that has to go with that. And we found ourselves just really not making that a priority. I mean, it just, we were getting behind and we just couldn't find a reason to catch up. And so we, we let it go and when it got bad enough, then we, when this guy started, I said, clean the darn alleys up. Gosh, he did it.
Okay, and just a couple of other follow-ups. You know, you've mentioned, you know, that in some areas of the city like Colonial, also, there's a lot of problems out there and it is a county. Have we ever tried to partner, do some partnerships with the county to kind of help them clean that up?
Yeah, so the county has several cleanup days throughout the year. And we will actually allow them to dump at our landfill at no cost. Vice versa, when we get our big loads of tires, because our, our landfill is unlined, so we cannot take tires. We're not permitted for it. We can store them out there for a period of time until we get to a certain number and then we have to get rid of those. So we work with the county, they, they take those tires for us, so it, it's a good partnership. We're always willing to work with them, special interest groups, or anybody else to try and provide those services. If, if someone wants to make an effort and, and help us remove blight, we're going to support that to the extent that we can. At the end of the day, it's still an enterprise fund and I have to make enough revenues to pay for the bills. But if we're able to assist, we do.
And lastly, I just agree with, I agree with Lisa is that I think that there's going to come the need to look at not having alley pickup and, and going to the front of homes, so I support that.
I've lived in four different houses over forty years in Casa Grande and never had alley pickup. So I've always had front container pickup, even, and I lived in Tempe for a few years. And we had it there and we had an alley, but we had front pickup, so.
I know what you're missing.
Yeah, but I've spent some time in. Just kidding. I did adopt a dog, I, I did adopt a dog that was found in the alley though, I know, so. But, but Kevin, seriously, what, what I was thinking too is, you know, we have the big cans and the front cans. And I should know this, but I don't know what zone I live in. I, I know it's easy to find out on the internet. But what if we put stickers like on the big cans or on some of the other cans, hey, you're in zone one and your, your pickup week is the, whatever, your, your bulk week is this week of the month or, I know it's not the month because it's a six-week cycle, but something like that to let people know when, you know, when their pickup would be.
I think that's actually a great idea. Anything that we help educate people on and just make them knowledgeable on what's available, absolutely.
But some people may think, hey, you pick up bulk trash every time you come down this alley, so I'm just going to put it out there. You know, but, but they don't know. The other thing is, I know you've had, I don't know if it was you guys or, or the county that had like a tire collection day over at the rodeo grounds, was that us?
That was the county.
That was the county?
We, we partnered with them.
Okay, can, and that's what I'm thinking, is that was a great service. And also maybe we could have some days like that where, you know, I know you guys did it recently down by the park on the south side there in the Life on Main area. And you had a Saturday where they brought a roll-off down there and everyone cleaned up and brought their stuff. You know, maybe if you did that on those weeks, you know, or sometime. I know what you mean, we can't just leave them there because that's going to create a whole nother problem that we don't have. But if we let people know, because you do with the Christmas trees, you know, if we let people know, hey, on this week, you know, we're going to have a big dumpster, a big roll-off in your area. And if you have bulk trash, bring it down. And that way, you obviously have to have someone there to make sure that they don't put tires and batteries and paint, but make sure we get the right stuff. That might help people. Also, I've seen in larger metropolitan areas that have private trash. And this goes along with your thing of charging for bulk pickups or so, you know. If someone says, man, I'm doing a big project and I'm going to, I know I'm going to need it, but they have those big bags. You know, they're like the, the.
The tote.
Yeah, you know, that could be something maybe we could get into if no one, private offers it in Casa Grande, which I don't think they do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not equipped to manage, I can, I can put the roll-off dumpsters out there.
We're not buying any more trucks then, all right, roll-offs it is. And lastly, on November second, you can bring your electronic items along with your paper shredding to the Youth Commission Shredding Day at First American Credit Union. And the guys from, always partner with us from Kevin's department and Greg, it helps. And they do a great job and you can bring your electronics there because that's something else that's special to collect. You can't just throw that away like trash.
We are currently still able to provide that program.
Thank you.
Number one, respect for the issue. I mean, you, you guys have got your hands full and I, I know there's no magic suggestion that we can make up here that, that will answer it. It's a multifaceted problem. I have lived in, in both neighborhoods, with an alley and without. I've also traveled the alleys a lot in, in law enforcement and I, I wanted to throw out that there is.
That last was key, right?
Yeah, I had to throw that in. But, but there is a public safety issue here too, not, not only sanitary of, of the alleys, but also the dumpster divers, the people that frequent the pathways of the alleys are, are quite often, they don't want to be seen on the street. So they, they stick to the alley. I, I have, my personal experience is that the, generally speaking, the neighborhoods that have front pickup as opposed to alley pickup are cleaner neighborhoods. I've, I've shared the dumpster and there's something about opening that lid and smelling your neighbor's garbage that, that, that is, is a bit disturbing. The other thing is that when, when you have front roll-off or front roll, trash can, the, the, the people have to be a little more strategic. They have to know what day the pickup is. They, if they, if they have bulk items that need to be picked up, they're supposed to call in and make sure that the truck comes by, even though they know the certain day. The, the alleys present, and I think Matt touched on it, a dump-on-demand atmosphere. And people, for whatever reason, and I probably was guilty of it too, they feel very comfortable in putting their bulk items in the alley when they need to. I know in the neighborhood I live in now, I, I either pack it up and go to the landfill or, or we call in and schedule it and I know what day and I store it in my backyard until, until the time comes. So I, I lean towards the, the front containers as well. I, I think that was all.
Yes, the, I still think that you might look at some kind of a gate or a barrier across the alley entrances on either end, except on the days that the firemen or the garbage guys come. And because as long as you got alleys, you're going to have trash in them. People, you know, they trim trees here and they don't want to put it in there, but they'll go around and dump it in somebody else's. And there's almost no way to prevent that. And the utilities are in the middle of the alley, they've got to be able to get down through there. So they're kind of a fact of life. I think it's, you know, you've talked about different ways to penalize or, or fine people. Code enforcement, does it cover that?
So we're, we're successful with, with some, but it's very difficult. Like I said, it's very difficult to know where a pile came from. So even if code enforcement comes out there and looks at the pile, they may not be able to discern whose trash it is. That's the biggest challenge.
I was thinking about it for an experiment, if you put something like, they put out the deals barriers that, that you can take and move when they're working on the road or they're doing this or that. And if, if you could, if you could have a no trespassing and let the neighborhood know, be aware of what you're doing and just see what kind of a difference it might make.
Yeah, you know, one of the challenges.
It'd be an experiment, it wouldn't be, you know.
We have some folks who, their access to their homes is through the alley.
Yeah.
And they enjoy that and, and probably will for, you know, until the end of time. But utilities also have to get in there and other service providers as well. People who maintain pools typically there, running down the alleys, accessing them. So it's, it's control of those alley entrances.
Well, they could move them if they needed to do that. I, I just think a lot of times when you see them put up, if you're just driving, you don't go across them. But people that live there, all the people you're mentioning that needed to be into it. If you had some, some stanchards that could sit out there that could be moved when somebody needed to go down it, especially the truck to pick up the stuff, just to see if it would make any difference, just out of curiosity. Because as long as we got alleys, we're going to have trash dumped in them and a lot of it's going to be brought in from out of our corporate area.
But in the test area, you're saying it was, it was way lower, the amount of dumping in that test area where you moved them to the front? Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin, thank you to your team. Greg, thank you. Okay, well, we'll stand adjourned until seven o'clock. How's that?
That was amazing, that, all the pictures. I mean, I've seen them, believe me.